Hello everyone, welcome back to today's stream. Um I'm testing a new plugin because somehow the kick and twitch is not working, so I'm already I'm already streaming there. And I found out there are a lot of spamming happening there, okay? So uh without further ado, because I have a busy day today. So I will just continue with the things and I this is an old chat. So I'm I will put in the new chat. I kept it because of this question which Aap Art Aap Art uh have asked this one. Uh like hey Amanpreet, how to stay positive or productive? Uh like we always have goals but too lazy to start, especially as an environment artist. This is a really good question. I saw unfortunate that this came after I ended the stream. I think in the last moment, our friend asked this question. Uh so this is something I also deal with honestly, right? And and we always are motivated to do a bunch of stuff. I also have a lot of stuff. That's why I set up a busy week because one thing after another, I have plans till eleven P M basically, right? So it sound very productive that I have I'm achieving a lot of stuff. I'm doing a lot of stuff. But actions without results are waste basically what I want to say. And I also stumble on this fact a lot, uh not just uh I'm not saying like I'm perfect, but this happens to me also that we stumble upon. And as an environment artist, as we have a lot of stuff to do and you might be seeing me struggling live on working on the scene as well. But what helps as an environment artist is breaking down things into smaller chunks. So if you have um if you're working on foliage, just work on foliage. If you're working on props, just work on props. Don't think about everything in the scene. It will overwhelm you and will demotivate you, right? And even if you have goals, break them down into smaller chunk. If you don't know, ask Chat G P T can help you really well. Just write down all your goals, all you want to do and ask, okay, what should I do right now? Uh and I also had like have multiple projects on me which I tried to do. But how I got out of it, I saw what thing have most monetary or in career or maybe in reputation way impact on my thing, right? So imagine we have five projects in the simultaneously we're working on. We'll pick one which will, you know, have most potential to bring our career forward. Imagine I want to be a foliage artist, right? So that's why I'm planning to make everything related to foliage. Like making organic scenes, forest, even landscapes, uh even just making dioramas for the foliage. We just create high quality foliage in there. That's why I'm scanning the foliage also. Doing photogrammetry around the trees and stuff like that. So everything I do, I love to do, I'm doing it around uh my uh my interest where my career can go. I know as a foliage artist, I can go a long a long way. So my goal is to build the whole forest. But thinking rather than thinking about the whole forest, I will just think about a tree. I say how about just make a tree? Uh we have like imagine I will make a birch forest. Uh that's like a big of a task, right? We have to look for a forest. We have to scan. We have to do a lot of other stuff. But uh imagine we just make a birch tree. We have birch textures available online. We saw raw catalog is a good website. Where you have birch leaves, you have birch bark. So now you have bark and leaf, just make the tree and maybe a tree family. Like a young tree, a mid-level tree and the elder tree. Or maybe make or even ancient tree like which is a hero tree basically. So make just the trees and uh learn how to make uh it well inside the three D tools like SpeedTree, PlantFactory. Even you want to try try out in Geometry Notes, okay, the same stuff. So that is like you're learning only a small part, not the whole thing. And once you have built it, you can go out and take the uh find a birch tree around you. Scan its trunk, scan its leaves and test out those pipelines and then you know use it on your tree itself, right? Then you don't have to recreate the tree because it's already there. You just have to replace the textures. It makes your life much more easier uh in breaking down it into smaller chunk. Uh I remember when we were working on uh people used to play games in the lunchtime and I used to work on uh dioramas uh for props and dioramas which are still in my portfolio. And I worked on I made like four projects just while working uh the half an hour in lunchtime. So I quickly go and come back while people are playing. I will keep working. As soon as they shut down the game, I will shut down working. Save the files and move on to work on the stuff. And company was supportive of this also, right? But whenever someone said like, oh, why are you working on personal stuff in the company? I would say they are playing games, right? And they also justified like it's a team building exercise, but I never enjoyed playing multiplayer games honestly, right? So I do play some games, some other games, story-driven games in the office. Uh but we have to reduce the number of stuff, number of projects we take on. It could be hobby project, it could be uh professional project. It could be your uh you know, personal life project like getting fit or uh you know, doing uh you know, doing hundreds hundred K steps every day. That is also a project, right? So like that, like I say, like the more stuff you have, the more and then lastly, I would say forgive yourself. I want to do a lot of stuff. And then when I'm not able to, I beat myself up that I'm a loser. I'm not able to achieve things. That do more damage than not doing things basically. So you do small things and forgive yourself for not even achieving that in the given day because life, right? And we don't have to, we have to slow down. You can read a book called Slow Productivity. It's a really good book. They talk about this stoicism of basically, you know, not running. See, I'm trying to, but I need to run because it's for a few months at least. Uh but from next year onwards, I'm gonna slow down things a lot and you might have seen it also. Right? Uh yeah, so that's basically the thing. You forgive yourself. Just break down your goals, your projects, your tasks into smaller subtasks and give them a timeframe, right? And say like, okay, this is this can take one hour. Okay, just do that in that day. That will make you more happy than uh thinking about all the stuff and not doing anything. And use Chat G P T, use Task Manager, Trello and all the tools to make yourself uh uh you know, track the things. I use Clockify to track the time. That helps me also find out how long it takes to do something, right? I have things which can directly help me earn money if I work, but I'm not able to. So again, just do uh you know, things into smaller chunks and forgive yourself even if you're not able to. But be ready to do it the next day, okay? Try to achieve it next day. But as long as it prolongs, uh you feel it, you start to get frustrated, right? You're not achieving. So don't fall into that trap. That's a really bad trap, okay? So yeah, I hope that helped. Uh and if you have any question, you can ask in the chat also. So let me get the chat of today in the hair. Hmm chat window. Yep, so here is the chat, new chat window. Uh I don't advertise it much on LinkedIn also, so maybe I should do as well. Maybe I should do that as well, so. Yep, so if you're here, say hello in the chat. I will love to hear from you. Um what you're up to, there's a lot of tabs we have. Hmm and and I believe we need to, because I I saw a post which I can show also on LinkedIn. I just commented. Just give me a second. And just a second. And super chat. And if you have. I just answered the motivation. You see like sometimes there are not even anyone watching the live stream. I still do it. This is this is just keep me going basically. No, so that's the motivation basically. Hmm where is it? Where is it? Screenshot. Next and. Alright, posted. So we'll just see how many if people join in. That's wonderful. If not, it's okay. And what I wanted to show you was that uh post which is wonderful. And then we can continue on our thing. It's related to our thing. That's why. Uh where is the reaction? Okay, so here is a uh just give me a sec and where is folks going? Yeah, here. So here is a post by our good friend Eldrix, who's also an environment artist. He's like one of the channel focus and landscape creating natural look road. So basically the road, right? And see uh spline mesh have hard mesh, maybe it's the they what he did there. He used real-time virtual texture, it's short for R V T, which is a technique in environment art also to blend the material in the spine directly to the landscape. Uh was bold with what is blending, blending different raw material approach, not only eliminated the hard edges also. So I commented underneath it, right? Uh in there uh also, also okay. We're gonna see if he gives. We will get otherwise we'll make it our own. Uh it's a really good project. This one, let me do the full screen. So it's like, it's really nice. The quality is bad right now. And there's a displacement also. For us, it's not working for some reason. We have dissolution and everything, but still not working for us. Love the natural look of it. I want to achieve this look. I wonder how this this grass patch and everything, is it like based on material? Or did he man manually painted it? That would be crazy. But he could do it in a P C G also. But look at this. Yeah, the amount of asset, the amount of detail and the wiggling wiggling of this. This is nice. It's lovely. So like something like that, I would like to achieve. Now I can download this video. Right, yeah, so this is good. Love this one. The amount of detail. See, this is like uh so what they what they did is uh use different textures plus use R V T. And also use the what does blend shader on the mesh itself. Okay, uh right now, let me just give me a second. Let me put in in the Okay, so I invited more people in there, okay? So let's uh continue with these things, okay? So we have built a layout yesterday. We have painted this. It's totally fine. We can do it. But what we want to build is a graveyard around it. Uh if I bring in my P R F, this is basically what we are going with the layout. So this is what it is. Yeah, this is much more simple and much more nice. And even even in our like somehow is something is wrong because this shader was good too. Somehow it's not working that well now. You see like when you go down, it showed that thing. It's not that well right now. So something is wrong uh with this. Maybe we'll re- recreate this one uh by drag and drop and create a new water body. But that will be fine too, yeah. I will create uh but overall like see this 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 thing blending of thing is not easily possible using uh it will take a lot of time if we do by hand basically. That's what I meant to say. So if we try to create this thing, first I need to check how our video has been a long time I have done the R V T. So let me let me check if I have something already in the collection because we are grabbing up a lot of stuff. And I was actually opening the level also. So if you just give me a second. And and I have another one open. No, this one don't have it. This is like I was doing the foliage testing yesterday. So I'll close this one. And and what else we need to have is Epic Launcher. Library, actually I opened one. Uh which one was it? Let me hope. This uh not here. Should be in the demo. Remember, uh just give me a second. Too many project. Where is my five point five? Cabin, cabin, where is it? It was not coming into this one, so I made it um bring. Where is it? Where is it? Yeah, here. So must be in here. So this is like the asset pack free for the month in here. So I'll search R V T. If we find something is not there. I don't know if there is, so uh U E five R V T. Okay, so let's uh look at this. See this this type of thing. It was heavy. We tried this a long time back in hunting simulator project. But it was so heavy that we had to cut it down. This R V T option basically. Must really helpful to blend. So we have to restart, I think. Uh let's go. Edit this thing. Uh where? Let us search R V T. It is on real-time virtual textures. And this is project setting. Let's see in editor preferences if we have it. Editor preferences, all settings are R V T. Virtual texture is there, but I think we have it on. Hmm already R V T. The real-time virtual texture, high sampling, done is on, enable, all the things are enabled. So we are good. So let's go to content browser, window, content browser. In landscape, we create new folder for R V T. And we create the texture, real-time virtual texture, R V T, landscape. Okay, so this is we need a different one. Uh environments, I think basically we get the color information and we get the height map information. Height map. And both of them. Okay. Okay. See, yes, open. Good. And we let's keep it little bit less. I don't know. Did the guy change it? Because I want to crash our system. Yeah. So we can without any trouble. We can increase it later on also. So we need to make a words from real time where is virtual real-time virtual texture volumes. Okay, and we I'll put it into rendering. Put into lighting, lighting. Uh and texture volume now environment. R V T V, real-time, real-time virtual texture volume. If and close this one. Where is our virtual texture? We have environment. Enable phone in, not only not, and we have and we pick landscape, set bounds. So it might be setting already, yeah. Yeah, it might be big because we don't need it that big. Yeah, so it's right now it's too big. So we can make it smaller also. And just to work in our main because our main area is really small. So it will be a waste of resources to spend it all across. So our main area is this big only, right? So our path and everything, it's better to keep it small. Right? So why make the whole landscape? You know, club in there. So right now, our whole path is covered with this real-time virtual texture. So we can be fine. Anyway, it works on tiles, so we are fine. And then we can basically duplicate this and we can call it Height map. And we just change the virtual texture to height map. And this is environment. It's the height map. Good. And now let's continue. Done. That's gonna be. Ready. So we go. In here. Because we not just have to put it on the landscape. We have to put it on the shader of the object also, which is uh. Too much. But. You have no choice. Do you have R V T here? Did they already give? And I'm not sure about. Pixel depth is there. Layers are here. I wish they could name them better. Nothing like R V T. Okay, what? Why everything is open? And it's class, which is good. And let's make a. Real time is not coming well. True. Texture output. Where is it? Here. Output here and. This one was cat material output, I think. Yeah, so we already have this exposed here. In the final one because it's going in the final shader. So we take. Base color. Back cooler. Roughness. And normal it says we need to convert it to. Transform. Is it just this? Yeah. Stupid stuff. To tangent wall space and then we send it to normal. And absolute world position. And. Uh what? Yeah. Absolute or maybe. World position. Why the name it like that when they have to have it in the description? Stupid. Epic guys, come on. Improve yourself. And we can just do the world height. Uh so yeah. Do we have more? If we have more. Paddle mask. World position offset. Hmm. Hmm Paddle mask has nothing. Basically, anything else is not there. So let's save it. Hope it don't crash. And the landscape. It is uh. Virtual texture is there. So is it in landscape or mesh? We have to do virtual. Virtual texture here we add. And it's taking time. Okay. Okay, did I add? It will link it in here somehow. I'm missing something. I can see in the end basically. Here there are. Something. But did not add anything, but I can add in here what goes. Environment. And height. Something is showing up. And there is height. So this is working. At least, but how? Because without. And then the virtual texture output. Does it like automatically tell and then from volume, volume it takes it? And then we mentioned in volume what we want to export where. Does it work with that? I'm kind of confused, but okay. I'll take it. Uh from maybe from here from volume are sending it. From there. So basically like something like that, maybe it is working like that. Hmm let's do uh the next thing. Let's say. Okay, let's see, let's see who all are here. Okay, I forgot to just. The the page. Hi. Is it? Is it? Is it my good friend the page? Brother, I didn't know your surname, sorry. But yeah, glad to have you here, man. Share your work in the group. I will give a shout out on LinkedIn as a proud community member. Okay, so let's googooog and let's do it in the shader also. And this is we are on a good path, which means. Now we have. Hmm what is this? What? What are you talking about? Why can't they just make a node also? Add V T blend. I would be much more happier if they make few nodes. Why they have to make uh us suffer and even technical artists suffer? So we know we have done. The first thing we have this rock and the second is this mesh. So we can try both of them. We can copy paste. Basically, the first I'm going to try with this. Rock. Content browser, dear content browser. Where are you? Here. So we know we have used the. Mashes meshes. Are there? Oh no, we are not in the right folder. To the church. Art environment, landscape path. I'm gonna give. This one. Again, because we have shared for this. Go back, landscape. Manage. Spines. Come now. What is a slope? And then mesh we have selected and we just plug it in. Uh it says voila. Yeah. So we know this mesh is there and have a shader. Here. We go tile level. Yeah, so this we made from for Navi, Mavi. So we will do the same stuff in here and I'll see how it works. Okay. That certainly don't look good here. Because it have our own texture. Which is supposed to be M R A and there is H R A M. I think. I'm gonna say so, yeah. So that's why it's looking odd. Don't worry about it because we changed the textures anyway. Now, who who where is where is our this? Okay, so we need a. Hmm world position. Then we have real time. Virtual texture sample. Here. And we take the height and we subtract and then divide. Subtract. Divide. So this is it up. Take this. Take this. And I think it's the parameter we press one. So it give you this parameter. We can say convert to parameter as um height. What this is? Um we can give it R V T. Oddness. And we can put it into. Where is where is where is parameter? This is a group, right? So we can say, okay, R V T. This is a new group we are making to put this inside there and have ten. Look at the speed of this. And saturate. What does it do? I don't know. There's nothing. What does it do? I don't know. Let's see what it say. Ah okay. Okay. Say if I just. Lerp for now. This and this as alpha. And I'll take a color and I will make it reddish. And say okay. What? Okay, we did not change this one. And we plug this in. The base color. Something is coming. This is nothing height already. So let's save it and see the world collapse. Look at that. Everything is red now. Okay, so. We must 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 have. What we have master material directly assigned on it. Wonderful. Why? No. Parameter. R V T. R V T hardness. What is happening here? Something is happening. But. So this is working, but it's like height is too much, I believe. For the value. It's too much. So it's going. Way 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 above it. See, let's see. You see? Our good friend gave us mind-boggling stuff. Okay, so let's do it. So what it's doing is already getting complicated. That's why it's like it's really heavy. That's why it's not supposed to be used normals, but it's okay. Making things beautiful. Add. Object. Object bounds. Yeah. And we have. Mask. Mask. Which one is it? Yeah, it's component mask. Ah, come on. Naming. We just need blue. I think the first way subtracting it. So we mask it, we add that and subtract by multiplying it with the value. To in. In those, in this. We take. It's going down. Okay, so. Here. Here and and we add. Subtract. And then we multiply. And we'll take another. Parameter. I will call it. All of. Default is one. And we multiply. This. With this. Mask. Multiply and then we subtract it. From there. And then we send it to. Divide. Good. Let's test it out. You guys, easy peasy. Let it change because for now there is nothing to change, but we have a new follow. So if we reduce. Voila. Voila. We have. So we reduce the fall of here and we increase the softness how much we want. Okay, so now we can blend in the material simply. Uh let's get back. The real-time virtual texture sample. So we have this already here. So we can learn our base color. On the place of that and we save it. And see what happens. Nice. Goes black. Poor fellow. What happened? We have to see. Because we did not select the water texture. So this one we were playing with. Height. I would duplicate this one. This one is height, so remove this one. Because we are taking the height and subtracting it and stuff like that. So. We'll take this and change this to environment if you don't see it. Here it is, okay? And then we take this base color and put into that. Now should work. Note. Should work. Yes. Where's? Oh wait, no. This one is. See. Now we have. Something. So let's see if it's still working. Look at that. Follow. Hardness is working the other way around. But look at this. Our curve is also not really placed well. So we need to, you know, place it well also. But we have much better. So now we can do the same thing. And let me see if I can. All these shenanigans. If we can put it somehow. Into. Material. Uh can we create a? Comment is but it's not there. So let's see. Now we copy this all nodes, okay? All these nodes and I will come to. Our landscape, okay? And we have materials, we have masters, okay? And we can create uh M F. Material functions. These are master materials. Yeah. That would rename. Yeah, in material function we can create. This is actually I'm going to make my first. Material function. Yeah, this is M F R V T. Blend. The work click it open up something like this. And we paste it. And we say output here. Come on, don't. And we have parameters which is automatically took. And what we need is uh input. How can we get the? Or we can bring the R V T also here, but we could be able to do it. So texture sampler, if we can convert this to parameter. R V T. Height map. Okay, let's see. Let's see if that works. And in our master material. Let me see. Copy this. But no. Paste it here. Convert to parameter, uh R V T. Height map. Need this one. And world height I will put it here. Easy peasy, nothing much and. Let's just leave it here. Let's try putting this. Uh material. Function call, okay? And then we can. Call R V T blend. Okay, so. Result is there and then parameters are. Where are the parameters for this? As you can see, there aren't these. Do we need to output it? Should we? But it's an input, no? To how to get it here on top of it? Generate uh can. R V T. Wall of. Still not. These, there are these which are coming from. These. So let me name it something else. M F. R V T fall off default as ones. Input function input is vector three. Scaler. Input name we can call it uh R V T. All of. Let's see if that works. But I'm sure it might not work. And function, let's just try. All of let's just put into. All of. Save. There is input, this one is, but it's not parameters input. That's good. Something we found out. So this is not what we need. How to? Does anyone know? If anyone know in the chat, please let me know how. To expose this parameter, it's not coming in there. From our model function, as I said, this is the first one I'm making. To make our life easier because we're gonna use this material function. I know my good friend uh. Have a tutorial on it. Then let's check it out. Let's use R V T with us. So a good shout out to our good friend Mohammed Suley. The following really good tutorial really helped me do this. So yeah, good stuff. And I believe uh we had uh you have. For a first material function. And there is. And forgot his name, the channel name. Was really good channel about materials and shaders and everything. I will share once I found out. He is really specific. Hmm. What? What 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 what? Does it? So. So we have to create these imports as another input. I guess how will that come? I don't understand. So output and then it created an input and texture adjustment when he put. It came from there. So texture adjustment he made. So there is a parameter and he said. So let's say if we say. Yeah, what? What is this? Now how how come they came now? No, 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 sorry, sorry, sorry. It's my mistake. Wait, wait, wait. We. Okay, so even if we. We have R V T blend. Which is needed. We need an input basically in here and input. How we gonna give it the input? This what this is? Let's try uh input. I don't know if this will work. So it's vector three. And I will take this one and put it here. As uh R V T. Height map. Yeah, and. We have it here still. This one. Okay, now we have it here. Come now. Stop lagging. So we have one input here. So all these are gone here. We just if I just plug this in. Plug this here. And lead all these. Which we can bring anyway with a single click. And I save it. Do we still have? And I go to material instance here and the hardness is there. All of want on top. Still working. See? Perfect. And I think we forgot to. Afterwards because we converted back and we forgot to give it. The thing, the class. So now. Now how by it? They both are in R V T, R V T. So it will be later on, it will be there. Wonderful. Yeah, so it's blending. So now we can use this function on other places also. It will be super easy uh. We can convert this into parameter also, I believe. Let's try convert into parameter and then we. Load R V T into instance itself. Convert to parameter, we call it R V T. Uh height map. And also we select it, we say group should be. R V T. Yeah. And this also we say convert to parameter. And we say R V T. R V T. Mat also it could be. I just can named it A N V based on the. We save it. And here we have. You know. We can mention in every. Usually it should be the same, but in some cases if you're making it a different level, we need to put different R V T. We can do it here. And. I think the sword priority, I think lesser is more is more is more. Let's try it out. So height map is the first one I want. So I can make it uh. Ten. Let's make it twenty. And let's go to material function and fall off. Let's give it thirty one and that one is thirty two. Okay, let's give it thirty. We'll see that if it's a higher number is up or lower number is up, we'll know now. Parameter R V T is good. This is also R V T and let's save it. Now uh. Everything is in R V T. We just need to close it. Open it up again, see? All in R V T, but why it is like this is still maybe it will get fixed. So here. It's M M. Like this here. This will. Um load up fine later on. Okay. So now we have all the R V D and everything. So now we can bring this in. Into anything. We have a rock material also. See if I. So where is my? Content browser always get lost. I close it, I think. Windows. Yep. So we in our master. We have a rock. So we have color variation in there now. So we'll just add that in front of it. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna remove the R V T because we're gonna use one. So I don't want to, you know. Do so we how to convert it back to. Can we can? Can we can delete the parameters. This is something I'm not sure about. How we can delete this parameter because usually it's there. Hmm let's just. Let's get in real time. Ah virtual. Touch sample. Because we have two only we're not gonna do. Environment. Height map. World height. Base color yes. Okay so now I can simply copy this. Go to M M rock and just paste it here. We can make material function and blend the material also is. And I think the parameter will be captured from there itself. Now you will see our rocks have something. On them already. Okay. And they have some shadow type of things already so if I go back to the content. And. And where did it keep it uh if it's in art biome rocks. Here's our M I rock and here is our. All of an R V T. So something good so let's check it here if it works in here. We need to add in other shaders so now it's just like this material function which we can transfer into everything and will just work basically. So it will be nice to have it everywhere in all the dots now we use uh we introduce this node and it will be fun right. So yeah this is this is good. And I believe it's a good progress we have made and now we can start blending all the other good stuff with it. And I will just. Uh we need to this. With uh files save as all that will work on all the previous maps also. There's no point of saving them. But it's fine. Okay it's taking some time so let's been looking if someone have any questions of the pressure uh we didn't have anyone so I will. Was something. Uh. Okay. Hello Shubham Anju what's. What's up what's up what's up uh so I'm wrapping up for today. Uh it was a good progress it takes time to save the scene but I really enjoyed blending the stuff together. And that's what I was starting in last asked like by the art uh the guy asked. How to stay productive this is what I'm trying to do like showing up every day and doing a small stuff. Um I thought like it's not blending well so let's use R V T again then I saw the post on LinkedIn. We go ahead and then we have achieved this yesterday I felt like okay we add some more. Previous on Monday we decided to polish just the texture of the trees we just did that so small chunks at a time. And I will try to come every day uh show up and do it of the session regularly so we have some stuff. And meanwhile I'm trying to figure out in there is is uh streaming on. On YouTube as well as on Twitch and kick it is. Basically crying with the connection speed so I don't know. Uh how it is right now let me see how it is going. So I can show you also if you want to hear so. Okay so here so it's uh you see is uh people spam basically every day. Yeah so every day and it just come here and just go it's not connecting regularly uh if I. Come here you see is it come and just go like it's one minute two minute it just break off and then just come okay. It's something is wrong with this one and let's see how Twitch is doing and stream manager. And somehow it don't and then. We have followers but. No comments basically. I do it but does not play uh somehow but it. I don't know how it works so I'm trying to stream on uh both of it uh through OBS. And Twitch it is regularly going YouTube it is going I can see people there commenting here also. Uh so that is good uh it is working there but not on Twitch channel everywhere else. Oh but it's okay oh we can survive uh without that also I believe uh even if it don't work. And as always everyone uh everything in one place in Top Med. But I sent the link uh you can join our Discord server from here you can uh if you are from India and have worked. Uh in the industry kindly fill the salary survey with your last salary there's a format given in the form so fit according to that. If you need a portfolio review or we need to talk need a free one-on-one session for counseling for career counseling. If you're stuck I don't know where to go what stream to pick and what to do uh next and. You can reach out to me through this and we can have a I can provide you a free one-on-call only thing is it will be recorded for YouTube channel. If you're not comfortable I will make it anonymous I will hide your all personal detail and name and face and everything and post it anonymously. You can check some of it on the YouTube channel already which you're watching. Uh and here's the mentorship if you can afford you can join the mentorship. And there's a tutorial which I made last time here's a bootcamp which uh I'm gonna do the feedback session on Friday. And here you can read a good testimonial from all the wonderful people who have joined before basically. Right so yeah so good and Sahil apologized for this he said like he didn't mean to but it's okay. Uh but yeah it's it's okay like if you have any critique on anything say it to me on LinkedIn or. Uh say it via email it's all wonderful but on our channel we have wonderful stuff always going on uh we post regularly. Uh regularly the videos art vlogs and there's art talks which I invite you there are wonderful chat. I talk to them some personal some other stuff and portfolio reviews are there. Yep a bunch of formats and bunch of things I started posting this uh plant factory and we need to post update the thumbnails for this. Uh but look this plant factory is going on because I'm really bullish on that. Uh so learn plant factory with me and if you're interested in foliage you want to learn more about foliage and I want to learn from me. Uh I would say I will just need to be. Helping me with the creating foliage for my uh studio. Uh in return I will teach you all things game art environment art or anything if you have if you can spare some hours to help me with this thing. You can join in the mentorship program or you can join the internship program I'm running. So on on the website so if you go to F future pass creative website. Simply F P creatives dot com I will share you the thing also in the chat and you come to the bottom basically. Uh here. Okay we have a bunch of internship opportunities here uh and you can join in here. That's pretty much it that's all I can offer to support all the. Aspiring artists who want to get into the industry and want to learn more about the things so this is all the ways I have created to help you guys so. If you need help I'm always here if you're stuck I'm here to help you unstuck. If you need to learn anything just post it in Discord server or come join me live when I'm doing this. For now I'm doing it in at two to four P M uh Central European time which will be like five thirty to seven thirty Indian Standard Time. Or you convert your own time zone uh so yeah so I'm doing it every day uh I'm really enjoying it try to stay uh. Regular and as soon I want to do it in the morning also so twice a day it's just like I'm working. So to help you guys more with the things and so I also achieve more. So yeah so we are progressing on the scene really well so if you need any help I need any feedback post it in there I will post a feedback. Her thread tomorrow so you can post all the things in there so I will have a look at on Friday so yeah. So keep up the good work and I hope you enjoyed and learned something new from this I I definitely did uh and. Do join in next time and I will see you in the next one guys bye.